Good morning, everybody. It's, uh, we'll call this morning's meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, November 2nd to order. Uh, the first item is the approval of the agenda. And just a note that item number six has been withdrawn. So item six will be removed from the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the change. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Moser, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard this morning on items not on the agenda? Looks like everybody's here to witness awards today. All right. Anybody online?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. We will move into our employee recognitions. Gabe, he's not here, okay. Well, Gabe has had 15 years of dedicated service to Clay County. So on behalf of us, you can tell him thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate it.
And I see Jason is here. Good morning, Jason. Jason also has 15 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County. Congratulations. I think the sheriff wants to say something, too.
Say what you want, I still got the plaque.
So Jason, uh, Jason came to us from West Fargo. He, uh, he worked West Fargo full-time, part-time in Dorruth, and he came to us in 20, or 2006. Uh, he worked a short time as patrol, and then he went into investigations. And he works all cases from cattle rustling, which is, true story, he has a case right now, to homicides. And, uh, he, he does a good work in, in those positions. We appreciate your work there, Jason. Thank you for everything you do. And, uh, I know some of those cases can get difficult to work, but he's able to work right through those. So thank you very much.
Next, we have James Backland. James only been here for 30 years. Congratulations and thank you for your service to Clay County. And Sandy, you want to say something?
Look at him, Rod.
Well, I don't blame him because I've known him since college. But no, Jim came to us 30 years ago. Started out in collections, moved into child support, and now is in welfare fraud. Um, so he's very well-rounded in everything that we do in my office. We are one of the top outstate counties for fraud. We do a lot of work in that area. We have a lot of referrals, and so he's an integral part of that. Jim is one of those people that has become just a really good friend, too. I'm pretty blessed to have people that have been around for a really long time that I consider to be good friends, and you are one of them.
All right. Thank you. I would also like to point out that I saw this morning in social media that, um, one of our former county commissioners had passed away Dewey Pussel. He was, uh, he served for Clay County for 12 years. He was an ed- a long-time educator in Moorhead. And so I think on behalf of Clay County, our Clay County Board and our citizens, we'd like to send condolences to, to his family. All right. Next, we have the approval of bills and vouchers. Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Mr. Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Approval of minutes from October 19th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. We'll move into our 8:35 item, the COVID-19 update with Public Health Director Kathy McKay and our Nursing Director Jamie. And we have Becky back again this morning.
So we'll go into the numbers that we have current. As you can see from, from last week, from October 25th through November 1st, we've seen an increase now. The last meeting, we had a little bit of a decrease. And the, the week prior to that, we also had just a very slight decrease in cases. But we've, um, this wave has been unique where it's longer than normal, and we're seeing kind of the up and down trends. But right now, we're still, we're back up, increasing both in Clay County. So we're at 402 as of November 1st. And then we're also seeing an increase in the active cases across the state of Minnesota as well. So they increased, um, to 20,0369 from 18,923 previously. And then on our, um, the other side of the river in Cass County, we're seeing an increase again in their cases. So they went up to 716 in Cass County, and they also increased, um, active cases across the state as well. So, um, the active cases by age, and, and we look at this all the time, um, we're seeing kind of the, the number now, the highest number in the five-to-nine-year-olds. But it's, you know, it's of course distributed across all age groups, but we're still seeing, uh, the elevated, um, cases in school-aged children. Again, the five-to-nine is the largest, um, active cases. Our cumulative cases by age, we're at 10,717, and we're seeing the age groups cumulatively again, uh, the 20 to 24, um, age range is the highest, and then the 30 to 34. So this is across the, the pandemic, the cumulative age groups that have been impacted. And these are our cases, um, Clay County cases per week from July to current. So, um, it's an upward trend beginning, um, in August where the fourth wave really started. So, um, this, and you can see the, the trending there, um, from July through, um, and this is through October of 24th, so far in this wave. And then we see the number of cases per week. So this is an, this is an overview of the cases again throughout the pandemic. Our numbers, um, you see the increase in the, in the, when we started this wave back in August. So we're seeing this, this increase, and it continues to be, um, you know, increasing again. We see a little bit of, of downward trend at times during the wave, but then, and then it goes up again. So it's kind of a, um, again, longer-than-average wave, and we're just seeing the fluctuation of this virus. And then I'll turn it over to Becky to talk about the next slides.
Good morning. So this is from the, the CDC, uh, their Level of Community Transmission Map that they put out, um, that's updated weekly. We haven't shown this the past several weeks just because there has not been any change. But as you can see, the entire state of Minnesota, with the exception of one county, is still at that high, high level of transmission. Um, I did include the definition up there. So high is greater than 100 cases per 100,000 people, um, in a county. And then this is the Clay County deaths per week, and we have not had any newly reported deaths since last week. So our total number of deaths throughout the pandemic remains at 99. Uh, this is our Clay County hospitalizations per week. And so you can see that we had dipped down a little bit, um, for a few weeks ago, and now the numbers have ticked up a little bit, um, for the last two weeks. Again, that last, um, bar there is not complete yet, so that number, you know, we had six hospitalizations so far from last week. That number could, could increase as the data catches up. And then this slide again just breaks down recent hospitalizations from August 1st until current for Clay County residents. So the general trend that we've been seeing is that the majority, 59% of those that have been admitted to the hospital in Clay County are under the age of 65. So we're seeing younger and younger people with this current wave, um, being hospitalized. The bar graph on the right breaks down into each individual age groups for hospitalizations. And then this is the hospital capacity for our, uh, local hospital systems that we've recently been able to, um, have available to us. So if we look at the available staffed ICU beds for adults, um, Essentia as of, um, October 30th did not have any staffed ICU beds. Stanford had four, and the VA had seven. Um, and then in terms of the, the pediatric ICU beds, um, there was one pediatric ICU bed available throughout the whole state of North Dakota, and that was, um, in Stanford. Um, and then this is North Dakota hospitalization data, so specific to COVID patients, um, that are hospitalized. So there are currently 170 hospitalized due to COVID with 16 in the ICU. Last week, the number was at 173 with 18 in the ICU. So the number of hospitalized COVID patients in North Dakota has remained about the same throughout the last week, although still elevated. The chart in the middle shows current hospitalizations broken down by age. So we currently have three pediatric, um, admissions in the state of North Dakota. And then the chart in the right shows the age groups of total admissions throughout the pandemic. And this is the updated graph from the Sanford Healthcare Systems that we show every week. And again, um, seeing the same trend week after week. Uh, the red people represent those that are not vaccinated. The whites represent those that are vaccinated. So the overwhelming majority of hospitalized cases continue to be among the unvaccinated. 33 of the 35 patients on ventilators are, are not vaccinated.
Becky?
Yes?
I know this is probably not something that's shared, just curious. I know as part of living in a metro, significantly, I think for North Dakota, Fargo is their metro, uh, it would be curious to know those hospitalizations, what percent is local and what percent is, is outstate. And I, I, I don't necessarily think that changes how we do business, but it certainly would be interesting to know.
I don't know if we would have access to that information. I don't, I don't think we do. We have access to our Clay County hospitalizations, so any Clay County resident would be part of that total number that we report, but we wouldn't necessarily know where the other numbers are coming from. All right. Um, and then this is the breakthrough cases that we report every week, and MDH updates this on a weekly basis. Still continuing to see very negligible numbers of breakthrough cases. So we're at 1.777%. Uh, breakthrough hospitalizations remain low as well at 0.081% and breakthrough deaths at 0.012%. So the takeaway here with this slide is that the vaccines are doing their job. I know when we hear the word breakthrough, that sometimes implies that they're not working, but they are doing their job. They're keeping people out of the hospital and, and preventing people from getting serious, um, symptoms. So there's been over 3 million Minnesotans who are fully vaccinated, and we continue to see this strong, strong protection.
Becky, I have a question.
Sure.
It's, I'm, I'm just trying to grapple with this whole thing myself still. And I, um, my question's in regards to, um, those who have been vaccinated, the, they can still carry the virus. Is that correct?
They could, if they wind up getting infected. Um, so the way that, you know, the vaccine is not a, a magic bullet, so people can still inhale in the virus. The virus can, you know, come into your body, but when the, when the vaccine is working, it, it helps your body fight off the virus before you develop serious symptoms.
Okay, so...
So that's kind of the difference between the masks and...
Yeah, and this really, this really doesn't have any, my questions aren't related to masks. My, my questions are related to, early on, there was a lot of conversation about, um, the virus being able to mutate. And the likelihood of it mutating, it has to have a living source to mutate.
Correct.
And so can a virus still mutate in someone who's been vaccinated?
So in order for a virus to mutate, it has to really spread throughout, um, a community through a large amount of people, time after time after time. So people that are fully vaccinated, you know, there's studies that are showing they're not, even though they may become infected, their, their body is not shedding virus, it's not replicating, um, as long as people that are not vaccinated, if that makes sense. So the likelihood for the virus to continue to mutate is much higher if people are not vaccinated.
Okay. Thank you. Jamie?
Morning.
Good morning.
So looking at the vaccine data now, um, the statewide data for, as of 10/28, um, for those 12 and over, for Minnesota-wide, people with at least one dose of vaccine is at 73.8%. And then those that have completed the vaccine series are at 70.3%. Uh, we've talked a little bit about the campaign in Minnesota for the opportunity, um, for a voucher basically if you have, um, children that are being vaccinated. So that is in that 12 to 17-year-old age group. And those links are on the Minnesota Department of Health website. And I'll go to the next slide and look at the Clay County doses administered each week. So again, um, we are at 15,819 doses that Clay County Public Health has been administering over the last, I think we're on week 44 now. Um, so the, um, that's a significant number of, of vaccines, but our numbers are, have continued to be low. This last week, we did 81 doses. But I also want to note that, um, it isn't just the doses that are being administered for the people that are coming in, but our staff are shifting out into the community and serving those that are most vulnerable. So just to give you some examples, every week when we have doses needed, we, we finish up our clinic and we run out to Churches United, Dorothy Dayhouse, the Red River Recovery Center, the Clay County Correctional Facility, the West Central Juvenile Detention Center, the Nursing Homes and Assisted Living. So we're going from facility to facility and administering doses. Um, we've also been to many, many high-rise, um, and senior apartments in the community. We've been to MSUM, Moorhead Concordium, Moorhead State Community Technical College. Um, last week, we're at the DGF School, the High School and Middle School. We've been to the Ullin-Hitterdale Schools, the Moorhead Schools, and the Law Enforcement Center. So really wanted just to point out that not only are we, are we providing the, the doses we're in the community and providing those doses as well. So the vaccine is very readily, readily available in our community. We talked a lot last week about pharmacy and easy access. Um, unfortunately, some of our commissioners were able to get to the pharmacies for doses as well. We have eight pharmacies in our community that are administering vaccine, and also we have three healthcare providers and public health. So lots of opportunity. Want to also note that if people are having any trouble getting it, uh, registered for vaccine, we have our clinics posted on the county website. We also have a signup list for anyone who goes in to register and there's not an appointment available until we get more vaccine. But also, you can certainly call the hotline, um, for us, and we'll help you to get registered with the vaccine. And the number for that is the 218-299-7204. And then also, just to kind of talk a little bit about what we're doing this week, um, so we have posted and advertised and invited people to register for the clinics we have this week. We are providing Moderna vaccine and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine this week. We don't have Pfizer vaccine available to us this week. We are, um, offering the first, second, and booster doses for Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson. We have a clinic today at the Family Service Center from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. We also have a clinic on Thursday from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. We are moving to the ITV room, or we have moved to the ITV room in the Family Service Center, just to have a little bit broader space and to increase the number of, um, vaccinators. We anticipated that we would have a much higher demand once we started offering the Moderna boosters because we provided a lot, thousands of doses of Moderna, um, earlier on, and so that's who's been invited to come in for those.
Excuse me, sir. Are people from North Dakota invited to this, too, or does it make a difference?
You know, we have, we have not invited them by email to register, but it's on our website, and so we are not screening people. Um, but there's opportunities on the North Dakota side. Again, there are so many opportunities out there, but we would not screen anyone and, and refuse to serve them.
Thank you.
And that's pretty much what I had to share for today, unless you have some...
Jamie, those who, those who have had the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, when it comes to the booster, they're, they're able to use the Moderna?
There, there is the opportunity for mixing and matching the doses, yes.
Is there, is there a recommended preference?
There is not.
Okay, okay.
Lot of personal preference, but...
I didn't, I didn't know if there was, um, if there were guidelines that suggested that another type other than...
No.
That one might offer more antibodies or whatever.
Not to my knowledge, unless you know. Yeah, I don't.
Mr. Chair, the CDC is, um, is stating that, um, it is whatever they choose to. They can, they can, um, have the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine if they had that as their primary, or they can choose to have the Moderna. They're not really making a strong recommendation either way, so...
Okay, all right. All right. Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you again.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Till we get this thing settled down. All right. Our next item is the acceptance of the Victim Services Grant Award. Looks like Brian, you're going to handle this one, huh? All right.
Great, I'm not going to help you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. To be honest, yeah, I'm here in, in place of, uh, Michelle Osnowski. She's out of the office today. Uh, actually, this was something that she was meaning to put onto the consent agenda, uh, but it didn't, uh, she didn't put it on there correct. But just to be able to inform the Board, this is a grant award that we regularly look at to get every two years. In past practices, oftentimes, there's a matching requirement. There's not one this year. It is a $140,000 grant for, um, the next two years for victim services, uh, through the Office of Justice Programs. Would ask the, um, Board to sign off on that and accept the grant.
All right. Any questions for Brian?
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Moser, second by Commissioner Kaylee to approve the grant award. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. All right. Next, we have the request to support, uh, to correct data for broadband services in rural Barnesville and Roelag. And I'm assuming you must be Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up, Tom, and Christine? Oh, wait, no, I got the wrong line item here. Carrie?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, good morning. We, uh, we do have, um, in our packet, we, we did receive your letter of information and request. I, I know this had been sent individually to each Commissioner, and we felt it would, it would be appropriate to have this as an agenda item. If we're going to assign something, we like to sign it on behalf of the full Board typically. So, so anyway, if you would care to give us an overview of...
Sure. First of all, thank you for your time in front of the Commission. I am Tom Stanolfson. I'm the CEO, General Manager of Red River Communications, based out of Abercrombie, North Dakota, but we serve a large portion of Clay County. With me is Carrie Kleingartner. She is our marketing specialist, and she was the person that had helped draft and send out those letters. So if I may take a little bit of time, just a few minutes, and set a foundation for what we have going here.
Do you like to...
If you, if you would, please.
Can I just sign if I can ask you something?
Please.
Um, Red River Communications is a rural broadband provider. I, you know, there's a lot of news about broadband nowadays and grants and different, different things like that. But, uh, one of the ways that us rural providers have been able to provide the broadband service, the telephone service, if you will, for years, is by funding mechanism under what's called USF, Universal Service Funding. And, uh, as the, as different programs have expired and new ones come about, uh, that funding for, for about 1,000 locations in rural Clay County, most of them all being in rural Clay County, was eroded by a, by a mistake or an erroneous 477 filing. This 477 filing is filed with the FCC by broadband providers. The city of Barnesville's 477 data, which Barn, the city of Barnesville is what we call an ILAC, or a, a phone and broadband service provider. When they filed this report with the FCC, they mistakenly filed it, that, that green area that you'll see, that, that shaded area, that they were a service provider there, which eroded any funding for Red River Communications as a provider there. And we are the sole provider. We have provided fiber to the home services there. So we are currently not receiving any of those USF funds for approximately 1,000 locations there. We have had a waiver filed with the FCC for two and a half years, and we've had difficulty getting this corrected. We are engaging our local senators on both sides, our local senators, our US senators on both sides of the Red River, asking for their assistance with the FCC. We have had numerous calls with the FCC. Um, we are only looking for support on that rural broadband. As the CEO of the organization, if we cannot continue to receive USF funding for those rural locations, I have no choice but to raise broadband rates. That construction that was taking place there is probably in that $15,000 per mile to serve that. So that rural funding is very important for there. We have, so we are serving that, uh, everything within those yellow lines are our service area. So I think most of us realize Roelag is not a real large community, but we call that our Roelag Exchange. And of course, rural Barnesville. And you can see the community of Barnesville there, how small that is. You know, we consider it about a one mile by one mile, and they do serve their customers. Again, this was all created by a mistake that was filed at the FCC. The city of Barnesville has been working with us very, very well. Their citizens are signing letters of support. Right now, we have over 600 letters of support from, from locations within there and, and local politicians, if you will, such as yourself. Just trying to create that unified support to get our senators to hopefully make some calls to the FCC and get this taken care of. So I've said quite a bit. I've said it quickly. I know you guys have a lot on agenda. Can I answer any questions?
Well, I think it's very unfortunate that a mistake has caused, uh, caused the issue with the, with the funding, and it's, um, broadband is a, it's a major topic throughout the state of Minnesota as well as our nation.
Correct.
And the importance of it with today's technology and how it serves education and everything else. So it's extremely important. I certainly, I certainly have no problem supporting and, and suggesting that our, our, on behalf of our Board, we send a letter to our federal legislators, and hopefully this can be reversed. Maybe on another topic at some point in time, maybe, maybe your, your firm would be interested in expanding your services in some of the rural portions of our county.
We really would.
Well, because we are, you know, we're also very interested in that, and we know that that needs to be maybe a, a public-private partnership. But for today, I think you have a request, and, and hopefully we can, um, support you in that request this morning.
Mr. Gross.
What was, if they know, must be aware there was a mistake in the, in filing for it, why are they against approving it, or why do we're going through this, and why can't we just say, hey, we made a mistake, let's correct this, and...
Very good question, Commissioner Gross. Um, again, that mistake that was filed under the Barnes... the Barnesville, and of course, there's consultants involved in helping, you know, get these FCC funds. The city of Barnesville completely supportive as soon as they were pointed out that there'd been a mistake, it was rectified. Our, our need to get things changed is at the FCC Commissioner level, along with the Wireline Competition Bureau. They are where a lot of these grants that you're, you're hearing about for broadband and this universal service funding is administered by. Did I answer your question, Mr. Gross?
Well, yeah, I mean, it just seems like it could be a simple matter, you know, instead of going through all this process.
With all due...
We thought so too, Frank.
With, with all due respect.
Thank you, Commissioner, for a long time. You know how it can be working with the federal state government.
We had no idea it would take two years to, we would still be sitting...
It seems ridiculous to go through this. I'm sorry to come up with words like that, but it just seems ridiculous to go through this process.
I appreciate the fact that you're willing to ask questions, and it really is. We're going through this. We intend on being a very good broadband provider in Clay County, both with this, and as the Chairman indicated, we would be interested in sitting down with your staff. I know there has been some calls from the staff under the county level with a lot of these funds recognizing, and it's, there's really so much going on, it's hard to keep track of it all, to be honest with you. But I, for the record, along with this, and, and I've been in my position about 15 months, know that Red River wants to, to have a very good working relationship with the Clay County.
I know there's, there's federal dollars for infrastructure for broadband, and I also know that there's state dollars for broadband infrastructure, and, and so anything that we can do in that regard to help influence your ability to, because we can't, we don't have the resources to do it as a county government. We...
Correct.
Your job, that's what you...
Yes, yes.
Your profession is, so.
I will, as I sit here, I will commit to you that within the next 30 days, we will engage your offices.
Very good.
And make sure it is. Again, I know you guys have a loaded agenda and stuff there. Is there anything else I can answer? Or let me say in advance, we just appreciate your being willing to let us sit here, and thank you in advance if you're willing to sign those letters of support.
Just a comment, yeah. Are we okay with the TV? Double checking, we're okay with the TV.
Oh. It's like we had our broadband...
Speaking of broadband.
Yeah. I've broken a lot of stuff in my day, so I apologize.
Do you want us to wait, Steve?
I'll just check.
Okay.
Well, it looks like we should be okay. Just give us one minute.
Absolutely.
We're tech, we're checking our technology.
See the importance of good broadband.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I also wanted to publicly thank Wayne Schindler and Jerry Jansen for sending the letters out on behalf of the Board of Directors. I know they're active and representing the community well on your Board, so grateful for them. But certainly, Commissioner Gross and I serve on the Rural, Rural Counties Caucus, and the broadband piece is a huge discussion for all of, all of rural Minnesota. And I know the Barnesville School District really appreciates your service out there, particularly when they did have to go online for a while. I will make a motion to, on behalf of this Board, send a letter of support to rectify the error, I believe, using, I think you had a stock letter written, didn't you, for us? Okay.
You guys all have that.
We did, and, and as long as you feel comfortable, if there's, if there's something...
Right. The information in there was fine on my, so that will reflect my motion.
Yep.
I'll second that.
You have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 What was the same sign? Motion, Carrie.
Thank you for your time.
All right.
Thank you.
We appreciate your support.
When it comes to reaching out to, on behalf of the county with looking at other things, I think one of the important people you might want to talk to would be Mark Sloan. He's, he's involved with that quite a bit, broadband, and of course...
What was the last name, sir?
Sloan, S-L-O-A-N.
We have it.
And then also, I know Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Mojo are doing an awful lot with the rural broadband, so maybe keeping them informed as well would be, be good.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you want 53 cents back, you can have your envelope back individually.
You worked for the post office for years. Helps you understand.
You can't throw away a stamp.
All right, next we have a request to execute resolutions 2021-48 and 21, 2021-49 to support petitions for Buffalo River Watershed District taxing authority. Christine, and we have, I see we have two of our Board members here, Jerry and Paul.
Eric.
And Eric, or he's the engineer. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
All right, so first, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak today. I am Christine Altrichter. I am the Administrator for the Buffalo Red River Watershed District. And with me today, I have, as Commissioner Campbell pointed out, Board Managers Jerry Van Amberg and Paul Krabonoff, and then our District Engineer Eric Jones. And we are here today to discuss two general fund levies that must be petitioned for by a political subdivision in accordance with Minnesota watershed law. The proposed resolutions will allow for the taxation of residents in Clay, Wilkin, Becker, and Ottertail Counties to fund administrative construction, implementation, and maintenance of projects that are common, that are of common benefit to residents of the watershed. We come to Clay County this morning with this request because 72.5% of the taxation determined by the taxable market value comes from Clay County residents. We are requesting your consideration of the approval of two resolutions to support the use of these funds. The first resolution is for a general levy fund in the amount of $743,568. These funds will be used for programs such as contributions to soil and water conservation districts, River Keepers, Red River Basin Commission, as well as water quality monitoring programs, and as a match to state and federal grants. These funds will also be used for project development, for projects such as the South Branch of the Buffalo River, the Lower Ottertail River, Stony Creek, Glendon East Tributary, and the Upper Buffalo River. The second resolution is for a general fund levy in the amount of $743,568.89. These funds will be used for the acquisition of LiDAR data for the entire watershed, which is in partnership with the Red River Watershed Management Board, as a match for the Lower Ottertail River Lassard-Sams Outdoor Heritage Fund Grant, and to contribute to the Whiskey Creek Project. So, these two general fund levies will be utilized in a variety of ways to address water-related concerns across the district. And I don't know if Eric or Jerry or Paul have anything else to add in terms of these resolutions.
Only thing I have, I have to add is, I just ran some calculations, just for the Board's information on what does this really mean from dollars and cents taxation standpoint. And so, last year's levies that were similar, similar to these, including the administrative levy and insurance levies, and basically the ad valorem taxes that the district had, ended up on $100,000 valuation was $18.09. And this year's proposed levies, if you guys were to approve these two resolutions, would bring that up to about $18.90 on a hundred, $100,000 valuation.
I don't know if we have any more of those homes, but...
Yeah, right. Right, double...
We all would know that.
Just as a basis.
It'd be a lot.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. I do have a few questions. First of all, I want to go to the, the first one, which is the 743,568. They're both the same amount, but under other, you have 20,000, and you have 175,000. I guess I, I always question what other is when there's $175,000 in a line item for other.
Yeah, so that other category is for, so it's bold, so then the categories underneath it is where that is. So, that would be the water quality monitoring and then grant matches that come up.
Other than the two that are specified?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. And then, in regards to the second levy that deals with the Lower Ottertail and the Whiskey Creek enhancement, what, that's to help pay the local share of those projects, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah, I can probably chime in on that one. So, the Board on the Whiskey Creek Project looked at providing, trying to provide about 20% of the overall project cost to that project area. It would be similar to what was done on the Wolverton Creek Project down in Southern Clay.
I guess, Eric, maybe to, to get to my point when I'm asking for is, is how many years will we have to make these kind of contributions to fulfill the local share? I guess is a, maybe a, what I was getting after, so.
Sure. So, the Lower Ottertail is going to be a multiple-year project. The watershed got a little over $2 million in grant funds, but there's a need for about 20% match on the cost for acquiring easements there. And the first phase of that was going to be a little over $300,000. So, you know, in this request for the Lower Ottertail, we've got 103. And so, you know, just for that first phase, it would probably be three years of similar assessments. Whiskey Creek, we put in $400,000 in this proposed budget. Depending on the grant funds that we're able to bring to the table on that project, we will make, have to make a decision next year as to whether or not we need to do that one again or not. We've been very successful in finding outside funding for that project. And then the LiDAR number on there, that's, that's just for the new LiDAR collect that's being done within the Red River Basin. So, that would be the watershed's cost for collecting LiDAR data in the Buffalo Red. So, that one after this year would not be on the list of, of this assessment. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Yep.
And, and Steve, in terms of River Keepers and Red River Basin Commission, do we also contribute to them?
We do contribute a small amount to both of those organizations, yes.
Maybe the only, the only other thing I would add, Commissioner Campbell, is just, some of these are legacy things that have carried, been carried forward since the time that the watershed quit being members of the Red Board. And so, the portion that used to be covered by the assessment that we would have sent to the Red Board, those organizations now come directly to the Buffalo Red for those contributions.
I guess from my, the reason I asked a question regarding River Keepers and the Red River Basin Commission, contributions that we make as a county, I, I'm just wondering maybe something to, to be considering in the future is, I think those, those things still benefit more than Clay County in terms of those contributions that are made. And based on the entire watershed district, maybe, maybe we could suggest in the future that, that we take those from ours and have you increase your contribution so that, so that they're, they get the same amount of money, but the entire watershed district is helping the cause. Because right now, we're helped, you know, I think we're at, what, 70-some percent of the tax capacity for the watershed district, but we're paying 100% on the local share that we're giving. And you, Paul, you understand what I'm saying there?
Yeah, I do.
That maybe we could consider, instead of the 25 for Red River Basin Commission, you could add Clay County's number to that from your standpoint and give one contribution on behalf of all of us. And, you know, I just, to me, it's, it seems to me then that would, that would, that benefit would spread across all of the district.
I understand that. We only have $1,000 in our budget from River Keepers.
Okay.
And then the Basin Commission is anticipated 2021, 8371.
How much?
8,371.
Between two of them, that's 10,000, I guess. Commissioner Kaylee?
I like what you're saying, Kevin, because I think it's more clear to the public, instead of giving in two different places, to see where our contribution is for River Keepers and for the Red River Basin, just in one line, one place.
You know, we, we have the same discussion on so many other things. Commissioner Gross often brings up on our economic development area, that seems like we're, we're putting money in separately in all these different directions. And why not, why not consolidate for the same purpose, but just have one entity do it? And in this particular case, it would, these contributions to these, which I believe are good organizations, and they're important organizations, and they do a lot of good things. But why not have our watershed district do that on behalf of the entire watershed district? And that's, it's just, it's probably late to do it this year. I get that. But, but maybe moving forward if that could be considered, so.
Oh, no, then so, Christine, let's bring that up. Work on that development, get what it would be on your, you know, your part, and then whatever, make sure that River Keepers is held whole.
It might be a slight benefit to Clay County residents in terms of costs, but it's still, you know, I, I wouldn't want to see the dollar amount reduced to the entities, but I think it would be better served coming from our entire district. Then again, I'm repeating myself. Okay. Do we have any other questions on the suggested resolutions? We have two of them. I guess I do have, how are things going? I'm going to turn to Paul and to Jerry. How are things going with, I think it was, was it last year now that the, the whole staffing thing and everything changed? Is that all going well?
Yes, we've gone, we've undergone a lot of change.
Yes.
In the past year, Commissioners. And I, I would say that things are coming along quite good. We have a new...
Yes.
Administrator. I think maybe this is the first time you've met her.
It is, it is the first time for me, yeah.
We're very, we're very happy to have her running the, the watershed administration right now, doing a good job of, of getting, getting things on, you know, where, where we're at. Would also like to say, I think, you know, appreciate the fact that the Commission stayed with us throughout this. This has been a rough road, you know, that we were kind of over for a while, a little bit of a rough time. But I think all has gone well. We've got two new people. Paul, Paul's well-known in the county, of course, in a number of ways, being involved with the SWCD, I think, for a long time is helpful to the watershed district, as a matter of fact. And Mark Anson is also learning and working, I think, really, really well with the watershed as well. So, thanks for all the time. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Mojo because of all the work that she has done. She, she attends meetings and, and keeps us on the track once in a while, too, letting us know what's happening.
I appreciate that, but I mainly attend so I can understand all of your abbreviation.
Well, I, I want to point out, I know Paul, you know, it's, you know, when I, we first talked to you about serving in this capacity, you kind of said, okay, well, because there was a short, we'll, we'll do the one-year deal, and, and we're grateful for your service in doing that, and we're even more grateful that you're willing to continue on, and we were very pleased to put you in for your next term. And your, your knowledge in, in all of these areas are, has to be very helpful to the Board. And I do want to point out, I know we talked about your new Administrator, but Eric's been around for a long time, and I've always had a world of confidence in, in Eric's work and, and the things that he does on, on behalf of, of the watershed, so.
You talk about change. Well, I guess I never saw the change, right? I came in as a result of some of it. But just feedback, I, I think Jerry, along with two other managers, you know, in, in working with HR, along with Christine, the reports we get back, Jerry and I talk quite a bit. You know, it's just been a, a good transition. And I knew Bruce real well, you know, but it is, I don't think... You know, it's just been a, a good transition, and I knew Bruce well, real well, you know, but it is, I don't think, or how do I say it? In, in working with the engineering staff that has been consistent for a long time, you know, I think we build upon it. I tried to meet with Eric and learn a little more, more detail, you know, quicker all the time. As Christine gets more acclimated, our discussions become more. And just making sure there's a cohesiveness with the board that I think is really getting better all the time, completely, and effectively. It's been, for me, as being part of Soil and Water, seeing that Wolverton Creek project, you know, that developed and started a long time ago, to see all that just continue south and to see how that big project goes, which, again, takes years. But it, it's quite a project, and it, learning about that, and now it's working time, and, and someday it'll be a little bit of an Otter Tail. But the other thing that I become, have become very aware of is also the North Reach of the Buffalo, that part that Becker's involved with, and, and the difference of views that occur in the Hilly Lake area versus the valley where we pull it all into the river. And then if I can make one other comment, I think the LiDAR that we ask you to support is imperative to our work. And for whatever it's worth, whether we're part of the basin or not, those people we know. And we continue to have that dialogue and, you know, and do the best we can with, with not being part of it.
Thank you. Christine, just one thing, moving forward, in the, in the past, we, when we brought, when these resolutions were brought before us, we also had a comparative to what it was, now Eric brought up today that on the same house value was 1809, that it would go to 1890. I guess I, without me going back, and maybe you have it in your documents here, but I read through it and I didn't catch it, but what were, what were the dollar amounts of each of these resolutions last year?
Last year, there were two resolutions, one was for.
Is it in this document?
No, it's not. I just happened to bring it back.
Okay.
Last year, we had two resolutions. The first one was for 727,496 dollars. And the second one was 500,000. And the first one last year was very similar to the first one that we're asking for this year. The second one last year was for the last part of the Wolverton project. And the other thing, as far as other assessments that we had last year, we did have a, it's called the Survey and Data Acquisition Assessment, that was 150,000. So, as far as the ad valorem taxes that the district was looking at last year, it was 1,649,496 dollars. And this year, I don't remember if it was, did we have a 26 or a $22,000 insurance?
22,000?
Yes, then, then the total assessment this year, this coming year, would be 1,759,126 dollars. That would be the difference between the two years. That's the type of stuff you're looking for?
Mr. Mojo?
Thank you. I also want to mention, I know that, I think on your board, either Peter's the outcurrent mod president or outgoing mod president. I think it's important to have such great representation there, as well as Jerry, you're a huge presence on Bowser. And, you know, Paul, you've had that with the Soil and Water. And so I think we've, we've got some incredible leadership on the state level that represents the watershed district really well. And my gratitude to you for serving in those capacities. Also noting for the public, in less than 10 years, the amount of grants, project grants that you've secured is almost 36 and a half million dollars. And, and that's huge. When you look at, yes, it's a, any tax is a burden, we understand that, but to be able to hold the line and, and see smaller increases in what that debt burden is for households, it's because you're doing huge work and finding, finding grants where available, and that's a large, large number. But I am really excited to see the Whiskey Creek and Stony Creek numbers that you've secured. I know those are going to be really beneficial projects in Clay County. And, you know, certainly because I attend those meetings, I hear all of the different projects going on district-wide, and those are good projects, but I particularly get excited when they're Clay County projects, so thank you.
Okay, and then the motion for Resolution 2021-48?
Mr. Chair, I'll offer the motion to approve 2021-48. Second?
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried, Resolution 2021-48 is adopted. Resolution 2021-49?
Mr. Chair, I'll offer Resolution 2021-49, motion.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion in the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Resolution 2021-49 is adopted. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. In your budget, I do see that, talking about the DNR's stream gauging at the Buffalo River, this isn't anything that I think is actionable this year, but I know Commissioner Campbell and, and maybe I have had discussions about adding a, another monitoring, monitoring north of Highway 10. We've talked about that, right? And I don't know if you've had internal discussions about that, but it really seems like there's, there's a larger gap in between that monitor and the next one farther north, and just not sure if you've had discussions about if it's worthwhile entertaining adding another one. But, you know, certainly that water, it's hard to say that in, in the middle of a drought, but, you know, as you all can recall, that water seems to really speed up the farther north it gets, and it would be helpful.
Eric, are, are those monitored by the National Weather Service or who? Like the, those gauges, like, for the, along the Red River?
USGS, right?
Well, there are, there's a couple of different tiers. So, USGS, the watershed does partner with the USGS. There's gauges at Holly, Saban, and then they call it Dilworth, but it's kind of, you know, a couple miles downstream from where the South Branch and the Buffalo mainstem come together. And then the watershed, in partnership with the DNR, is doing additional monitoring. I think it's at eight other locations.
Okay.
In the district, and that's stream flow monitoring. And then the watershed has a system of monitoring sites, they call it regional assessment locations, but they collect water quality data, and they enlist the International Water Institute to do the collection of those water quality samples.
So, then, is, maybe it's a two-part question. Do you, as a watershed, feel it would be helpful to have any additional? And if, if not, are, are all of those sites that are being monitored related to, I mean, if USGS only has three that they're monitoring, are they taking into account the additional ones that you're doing the monitoring on? Does that make question?
Well, they're all, they're all independent.
Okay.
Each site stands on its own kind of merits.
Right.
So that, but the methodology is very similar for all, all of the sites. I mean, USGS is measuring the stage of the water at different times of the year, and then they periodically go out and basically do actual flow measurements to see if they're, they got a rating curve. So, at elevation 900, we have 1,000 CFS going down the river, or something like that. So they go out there just to validate that what they're using for estimating flows is accurate. The DNR does that on the sites that the watershed has them involved with as well. So, same sort of methodology, or very similar.
So is all the, sorry, one last, is all the information, are they too siloed? Or are they, is it a successful in coming together so that you're able to see all of the different monitoring?
Well, I think, yeah, that's a, that's a great question. I think, I think there could be some improvements there in that regard. The DNR, on some of their sites, does have live flow information, but for the sites that they're doing for the watershed district, we get an annual summary of the flow conditions at those locations. The USGS locations, those are live, I mean, if you want to go see what the water.
Right now.
It is in Fargo, between Fargo and Moorhead, you can. If you want to see what it is at the Dilworth gauge, you can, at any time, saying, any of those USGS locations are like that.
This gives me a good opportunity, based on Commissioner Mojo's comments, that, to go a little bit in. I know, we've probably, I think we've had probably every hydrologist in this country reviewing this big project that we've got coming up here regarding the diversion project. And as we know, that, that diversion goes all the way north, and it ends up connecting back with the Red River somewhere in the Georgetown area, close, very close to Georgetown. That also is where, kind of the Buffalo, they kind of all converge there. Couple of issues here. First one is, is, I believe the Buffalo Red is working and helping spearhead the project for Georgetown for the 100-year flood protection. I hope that that is going well. And I, and again, I know that there's some funds available through the diversion project to help with that. Eric, if you could.
Yeah, I can add a little bit to that. So, last week, we did get a copy of the draft MOU between the Metro Flood Diversion Authority and the watershed district. So, actually Tammy Norgard is reviewing that right now. We're trying to line up a meeting with Chris Bakigard and John Shockley, just to kind of try to make sure everything that needs to be in there is in there. And then, what, what the diversion authority, through Chris Bakigard, has said that we could start doing some of the design work. So we have done some collection of data and, and started some of that work with the MOU to kind of follow up. Hopes would be that, you know, I, I think construction next year is probably a long shot with permitting and everything else, but I would sure hope that by 2023, we could have at least phases of these projects under construction.
I know that quite some time ago, I know Jerry, you, I think you were part of that meeting along with Bruce Albright and myself, and we'd actually met with the district engineers from MinDOT regarding the road raises and in the early talking about this project, and they were, they were somewhat supportive of it. So I'm hoping that they're involved with this as well.
Yep, that's, yes, the, we're working with Greg Masteller.
Okay.
He's the District Four Hydraulics Engineer out of Detroit Lakes. So he'll be involved in the project, and then as the project develops, there'll be additional people from MinDOT that'll be involved. Some of their involvement may end up affecting when we can do the work, depending on what other work they have along, because both these projects are along Highway 75, and.
So does MinDOT allow others to design, or do they have to be part of the design?
We can do the design work, that's not a problem, yep.
And they just have to understand, knowing what their standards are?
Yes, you know, in particular Houston, we were certified to do that level of design on MinDOT roadways, so not going to be a problem.
And then lastly, based on that conversation, would it be in Buffalo Red's best interest to have some sort of a future monitoring device further north? Based on when the, the new project is in, to just make sure everything is going as hydraulically planned before?
I guess, you know, I, that's the kind of thing I think we turn over to our.
That's why, that.
Our engineers.
Right.
Tell them to study it and come up with the, with the answer.
Right.
There is a, there is a need for at least stage monitoring equipment by Georgetown. During previous floods, we'll just erect a staff gauge and kind of monitor that for how fast is the water coming up during a flood? And it could still be handled that way, but, you know, the long-term station would, would make it a lot easier.
Well, I think there's an awful lot of things, including the CFS and everything that goes and comes into play in floods, and no flood is ever the same, obviously, but, but I think, I think some sort of monitoring system, independent of the diversion authority for that area and for the, for the watershed district, would be appropriate, I would think, so.
Yes, yeah, question, is that what you were referring to also, the gap? Okay, it's specific to that area?
Well, yeah, I think, I think, you know, further north, just being able to.
Right. Make sure we're still net zero.
Yeah.
The, the one thing I'll just add, you know, related to Georgetown is, it's a kind of a unique area, and a lot of it because of what you alluded to, Cam, Commissioner Campbell, with, you got three, three rivers. Coming together, the Red, the Buffalo, and the Cheyenne, and then you also have the diversion channel that will be coming in, in that vicinity. And because of all those different moving parts, there's been times when we have floods in Georgetown when there is no flood on the Buffalo, because the Red's just high.
Right.
And, and converse, conversely, the other way, where we've had huge flood coming down the Buffalo and not that much going on on the.
We've had the Buffalo cross Highway 75 and.
Yes, yep.
South of Georgetown, by Cragness even, and going, going, going west.
Unfortunately, multiple times.
Yeah, we're well aware of it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, anyway, thank you. And I think if those are things to, you know, those monitoring gauges and working with the diversion on that area for Georgetown is important, I think so. And I, and that's, that's also Commissioner Gross's district up there, too, so anytime we can keep him up to date on what's happening there would be helpful, too. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, speaking of engineers. Dave? Justin, good morning.
Good morning. We've got two items before you. First item is an equipment-related item. This is for a, a piece of equipment that we bought about 10 years ago or so. We thought it would really help us clean up some of the ditches and get some of the brush areas cleaned up. What we did find out or realize is that the reach that the current boom mower has isn't quite adequate to get down in the areas that we need. The tractor itself has to be up on top of the road on flat surface. If it's anywhere, if you try to cheat and get down the slope a little bit, once you extend that big, heavy boom mower out there, you're, you're in risk of tipping over the tractor and, you know, obviously hurting the equipment and putting the staff in danger. So, what we would like to do is get approval, sell this piece of equipment. We did get a, a trade price on it, just to kind of see where it's at, and it was, you know, it's a little different. Not a lot of people use boom mowers, not a lot of people have them, so trade price was, was not good. So, we would like to put it on that Min bid site. It seems to get a lot of traffic on there. And then we're working on quotes to replace it with a heavy-duty Skidster-mounted brush mower. There is internal service dollars in there for replacement of the, of the boom mower itself that would be kind of utilized. And to be honest, there's quite more than enough. I think the sale of the, the boom mower might actually pay for the most, you know, 90% of the new Skidster-mounted brush mower. So, my plan is to come back to the board and request approval once I get a couple of quotes together for this Skidster-mounted brush mower.
Right. Sorry, my mic was off, I'm sorry. We did talk about this at Highway Tracking, and their recommendation was to move forward with this request. Right.
I'll make a motion, move forward with it.
Second?
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. All right, next is the Road and Lou project for Elmwood Township.
Right, we've been kind of working with Elmwood Township and the residents down in an area where we got a, a bridge removal project designed and ready to go. There was some, some traffic-related concerns that were brought up. I'll let Justin kind of go into the, a little bit more detail on that. But essentially, we're, we're kind of administering this whole thing for the township. There would be no cost to the county, it's just a, a contract that would help alleviate some of these concerns by the citizens as this bridge is looking at being removed right by their, by their homes.
Yeah, so, a couple of the residents along 110th Avenue raised concerns that when the bridge was removed, they wouldn't have an outlet if the train was blocking. So they're just off of Highway 52 and right along the railroad tracks. So if there is a train, they do not have an outlet to go anywhere with that bridge being removed. So, in working with Nathan, the state aid engineer, there is a Road and Lou process. So in working with Nathan, the state aid engineer, there is a Road and Lou process for state aid, and if the road project comes in less than what it would cost to build a new bridge, state aid would cover everything, including the consultant fees in this proposal.
And is that the case?
That's what we're working through. So the very first part of this proposal would be to build a bridge estimate, and then we would get a funding letter based on that.
Okay, determine if a road would be cheaper.
Yep.
And it's just like a small little shoe fly, essentially is what it is, because it's really goofy, you know, everything on Highway 52 is out of angle. The road that they're on is straight east and west, so we're just building essentially a little bit of like a turn lane that would allow them to go around the tracks and go north and then still have a chance to get out, or maybe emergency vehicles to get in and that sort of thing.
The train is not allowed to have actual stop blockage, are they?
For a short time, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, but it's, because I know that we ran across that issue even around the Saban area, and they were not allowed to just, you know, because what is, that rail has to wait for approval from
Probably the yard in Dilworth.
From Dilworth to be able to get onto their line. So sometimes a train can sit for hours, but then they have to split that.
Right.
Right, so I mean, so this would be more of a waiting for moving train?
Right, I think it's kind of an infrequent issue, I guess. We didn't even really realize it or think about this, but we don't live out there either. So like I said, I think the cost on it's going to be pretty minimal compared to an actual bridge replacement, so it should easily fit within the parameters, but it would give a little sense of security for these folks.
I mean, don't make it right, it's still, it can be an emergency situation too, that's important to have, but, you know, we wait for trains in town here too, but we do have, we do have options, you know, to get around. So I'd be, so what you're just looking for, what are you looking for in this one?
We're looking for approval of a design contract with Houston Engineering that would basically, first thing they're going to do is they're going to get confirmation that it's cheaper than an actual new bridge. That way it'll be funded by the state, so they're, part of the design scope is to build a bridge estimate, and the second part would be to actually design the shoe fly portion that would, you know, you gotta take a look at drainage, you gotta take a look at alignment and fit, it's just a little bit of a roadway design. I'd say it's probably an eighth of a mile, so it's like it's not very much, it's just something that would, you know, our staff is busy doing our work, otherwise we would have tried to do this, but I thought, you know, being that it is covered by the Road and Lou project through bridge bond dollars, it's something that Houston could help us out with.
So is the road right-of-way that would need to be acquired from the same property owners, you have the concern?
Nope, it's not. They have different landowners, so, correct. They're more than likely would possibly be a little right-of-way. There is kind of a piece of grassy, unfarmed area right in here, so like you said, it's not, it's just really weird how it all comes together at this angle where the tracks are, and then there's a township road going north, there's another one coming, going east and west that goes by their place to the bridge that we're looking at removing, and it's kind of a quagmire in there, how it all is. They don't all join together. I think you have to go across the tracks, and then that's where you would join up with the north-south road, so this would join the east-west road and the north-south township road on the east side of the track, so you wouldn't have that issue there.
Okay.
Thank you. I am a little perplexed as to how it didn't come up in the planning process, that this was going to be an issue. You know, it's here, it's beyond the fact now, but I think for the, you know, I'll support this, I think this makes sense, we owe it to our land residents to make an adjustment. I think in the future, I know, I'm familiar with the site and know what you're talking about, but I'm not sure the rest of the board, you know, we have two newer commissioners. In the future, can we have like a Google Maps or a photo of the site, I think, just to be helpful? But yeah, I'll make a motion to support this Road and Lou project.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? See, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Great, thanks Steve.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
I like your sweatshirt.
Thank you.
I like your mask.
Your mask is, you need a new one.
Minnesota has great schools.
That was a little sports talk there. All right, committee reports. Let's see, Commissioner Mojo, would you like to start today?
Sure. Last week, I attended the ARPA CARES Act Committee meeting. We did have discussion on the RFQ for our diversity and ethnic community coordinator position. We're continuing to finalize that piece, and Darren's done a great job of working with different municipalities and jurisdictions to formulate that. I believe that will go to the ARPA Committee again on Monday, and then our hope is that either this next Tuesday or the Tuesday after, maybe, we'll be coming for discussion at this board. We did have discussion on some detox needs and continuing to wait to hear back. I think that should be any day, right, on the detox grant, and if addressing those needs could fall within that category. I think our next step really will be before we've done a really good job of making sure we had categories and tracking those categories, and so we're working on formulating what that would look like. Certainly, this board will have input on that as well. Then I attended the Prairie Lakes meeting on Wednesday. Loads continue to come in good there, and, you know, I know that I've not been on this board very long, but don't want to jinx it in saying everything seems to be going really well there. There are some concerns that Commissioner Campbell will report on, just making sure that we're continuing to take into account some things, but if the public doesn't know what Prairie Lakes is, I relate it to Toy Story, when they've, they are at the landfill and they're on the track, and they're taking cans out and separating the recyclables, and there is a, if you Google the Purim Recycling Unit, Prairie Lakes Recycling, you can see a great video on that. It really is something that Clay County can be proud to be part on, particularly when it looks like the trends in prices for recyclables will be going up soon. That afternoon, I also attended the Land Management of the Diversion Authority. We have not met as a group for a long time, I believe it was June or July since we've met on that. Really, the Cass County Joint Water Resource Board and the Minnesota Joint Powers groups are continuing to work through issues as landowners bring them up. So we did have fairly substantial land acquisition information coming out of that, and I believe there's some new staff that I'm not sure if we'll meet in the next short while that will be dealing on land issues there. Then I attended the Solid Waste Committee meeting on Thursday. We did have a question and discussion from a landowner adjacent to our property on the recycling center, or the new transfer station, sorry. And I think it was important to note that we had several township members present, that it did make the comment that fences in rural Clay County and elsewhere within our states is livestock fences can be right on the property line next to tilled acres. So we certainly will continue to be the best possible landowners or neighbors that we can be in terms of weed mitigation and boundary issues there. Otherwise, the rain is welcome, but certainly has brought some challenges out at the site for construction. It's a little muddier than usual, but there's a substantial amount of concrete and footings that is happening out there. It really is something, and hopefully, we can forward that drone footage to the rest of this board, because construction is really happening fast out there. And then we talked a little bit about Take Jack Back. As you all know, or don't know, pumpkins cannot be put into waste piles, so now, November 1st, yesterday, to November 14th, all pumpkins can be taken for composting at our recycling locations. So if you go to the Clay County website, you can Google or look up the recycling locations, and there is a tote there that you can deposit your pumpkins. We also had an update from a member of our SWAC Committee, and his name's gapping me, that's worked really hard with Moorhead State in terms of environmental programming and our landfill and the testing of the wells, and I'm gapping.
Russ, Russ Colson.
Russ Colson, thank you. Russ has done a huge amount of work in working with our staff to make sure there's opportunities for local college students to do some research out at the landfill and within our waste management program, so excited to hear that update as well. And then in the afternoon, I had the Minnesota Joint Powers Committee meeting, and we talked about two parcels, I believe, and continuing to take into account the needs and as fairly as possible, address the needs of our citizens that will be affected by that. And then after evening, I had the Lakes and Prairies Community Action Committee meeting. They're continuing to do really great work, and had an update from a pediatrician at Sanford on COVID-related issues. That board then did have a long discussion on a recommendation for mandatory vaccinations for their employees, and that did pass. And then I had the construction meeting that I attended virtually for our transfer station. That concludes my reports.
Thank you, I'm going to kind of go opposite direction here today, so Commissioner Gross.
No report today.
Thank you, okay. Commissioner Kaylee.
I also attended that CAP LP Board meeting that Jenny just reported on. I do want to note that there is a board position open for CAP LP, representing the consumer sector. It is a fabulous board to be a part of. CAP LP does really incredible work in a lot of areas in our community, so if anybody is interested in that, they can check out some more information about that board position online. I did also attend part of CAP LP's Staff Day. They have a consultant working with them on diversity and equity issues, so I attended those sessions as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Last week, on Tuesday, we did have the CARES meeting, ARPA 2, and Commissioner Mojo will report on that, I have nothing to add on that. That same day, we did have a diversion, we're referring to it as a diversion governance meeting, and if, about a couple of months ago, the Diversion Authority had a board retreat, and what came out of there was that there was a need to consider maybe an executive committee that with all the things going on, and because we only meet once a month, there might be things that might be critical to work on in the interim, to get some preliminary approval on and some other issues and working, and what are the duties and responsibilities of the executive director, and how would the Diversion Authority work with him moving forward? And so we have, we've had a member of Clay County, a member of the City of Moorhead, City of Fargo, Cass County, working with Jeff Schatz on coming up with some potential policy suggested changes moving forward. So we continue to work on that, and that was at the request of Mayor Carlson, that this be established. On the 27th, I attended the Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting. Commissioner Mojo reported on that. And again, the plant is doing quite well. We did authorize the plant superintendent to move forward with obtaining bids and quotes for the steel for the remaining material refracturing project. If you recall, there was a, we did, there was a $2 million bond that was done to cover several capital projects, and recently, those numbers have come in where it appears that we would fall about $130,000 short, and again, that goes to the cost of steel. And so we're working, we didn't want to see any more setbacks on that, so we did authorize to move forward and get bids on that and lock in prices. The good news is, is we are anticipating to have similar revenues over expenditures in 2021 that we did in 2020, and as a result, we should be able to pick up that additional $130,000 cost to those revenues. The plant had based its projections, was based on 54,000 tons per year being, that go through the facility. In past years, we've been fortunate if we could get into the upper 40s. The good news this year is because of that work that had been completed, we're looking at probably 52.5, so we're very close to the 54, and by next year, we're anticipating that we will meet that 54, which also means generating more steam. And happy to report that Clay County, who is having, had a deficit in their tons delivered, I think at one point, it was up to about 900 tons short. That number is down to 300 and some tons, and there's a likelihood that it could be made up by the end of this year, so that's all good news. That afternoon, we had a public outreach meeting of the Diversion Authority. We basically met some new members of the Red River Valley Alliance Outreach Team. We kind of introduced who they were, they have their own separate, that's the group who got the contract for the P3 project. And they've hired some local people to help with some outreach issues that are going to be important in that regard. And then we did have the lands meeting after that, and Commissioner Mojo reported on that, so I won't bring up any more there. Thursday morning, we had the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting, and I do want to echo Commissioner Mojo's discussion about Russ Colson and his researching and looking at a potential, another program at Moorehead State University that deals with environmental studies, which could include and work with having students monitoring our landfill. I think it's kind of a neat concept that that might be done. Take Back Jack has been discussed Thursday afternoon. We had the joint MCC, JPA, the Moorehead Clay County Joint Powers Authority regarding the diversion, and as Commissioner Mojo said, we, what we did is we approved two replacement housing differential payments. And for those that don't, aren't aware of what those are, those are additional costs over and above the appraisal for property owners when they have to move to get into something similar. There's a, it's a federal requirement in federal projects that that be part of the process, so we did approve those. We did have the Diversion Authority Board meeting that same afternoon. Kind of the highlight of the discussion was the financial close that happened, and the good news there is, as a result of some planning there, the original payments for the sales tax that we're going to, that in North Dakota that we're going to pay for this was designed to go through 2083. And now with the savings of WIFIA, and there was over $50 million in savings on the P3 contract compared to what was originally happened, that target date for being paid up has gone from 2083 to 2056. So it's a considerable, it's a 24-year early in comparison, so there's really been some, and I'll tell you what, I think this community can probably owes a lot to John Shockley. That man has just been incredible when it comes to P3 contracts and his knowledge, and with the WIFIA loans and all of those things, he really spearheaded that. Then yesterday, we did have the landfill construction meeting, or not the landfill, but the resource recovery facility, station, and as Commissioner Mojo said, there's a lot of concrete, and we're kind of getting backed up now with weather. I'm hoping that we're not going to be in for some delays in terms of the ability to work on this thing over the winter, but they're making some plans right now for what can and can't be done for winter work, so hopefully that does not push that project past the December date of next year. But I was kind of trying to read between the lines yesterday, Steve. I don't know if you were getting the same thing, but I'm hoping that it's not delayed, but it's possible. That concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I participated in the ARPA meeting that's been covered by Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Mojo. I also spent a significant time last week preparing for the public hearing in the Wild Rice Watershed Public Hearing tomorrow. I had conversations on Tuesday with Ryan Hughes from Bowser and Barry Nelson, Commissioner Becker County. On the 27th, we had county management, we received updates from Kathy on COVID. We also discussed the Association of Township meeting that's upcoming here, I believe, the couple of week here. We had updates from Rory Schmitz and Darren on a series of different issues. We also talked about background checks. So one of the, we both have, in Clay County, some of our positions require both a criminal background check and a Department of, a Department of Human Services background check. And until recently, that check was being done at CCRI, and they're no longer doing that. And so when our employees have to get that background check, they're having to travel for an hour to go, they'll go be fingerprinted. So we're having some discussions about whether, what's the possibility of having that here, here within the county? And so there'll probably be more information on that. It's not just, it's also impacted our human service, our correctional facility, Sheriff's Department, juvenile facility, and also paraprofessionals, daycares, things like that have to have that DHS background. On the 27th, we met with Dave and Joe. Dave's been meeting with MNDOT and the City of Morehead in regards to capital projects at the highway facility. And Joe's now working with them to kind of establish that plan with our capital improvement dollars. On the 27th, I continued to meet with Kirk and Mr. Melton in regards to the contract, operating contract with the City of Morehead in regards to the resource recovery facility. As I think I've shared, we met with MCIT prior to get some feedback, to ensure that we have the proper guidance in place in that relationship. We hope to provide a draft to the City of Morehead here within the next week for their review. On the 27th, I also participated, administrator check-in from the FM area. We discussed ARPA workforce and also the regional dispatch center. As you guys are aware, this board approved Cass County to be the fiscal host and I guess the, I guess planner for a potential regional dispatch center. And they've been, continue to work with SCH Architects in getting the information that our board would need to determine moving forward. Also encouraged Cass County to make sure that as we talk, look at potential changes to financial governance, that that, that planning moves along with the construction discussions. On 28th, I participated in the SWAC meeting that's been covered by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo. That day, I worked with Colleen for board prep. And also, we, this last week, we did a great deal of work with the first, first round of CARES money that we knew that we were going to need to participate in a single audit based on those funds. And that audit has begun, and so I worked with State Auditor's Office in getting some additional information. Participated on the 28th MCC JPA meeting, that's been covered in detail. Friday morning, we again worked on some information for the Wild Rice Watershed. Yesterday, I participated in the conference call with Darren and our legal counsel, Josh Hagam, on some labor issues. And also Resource Recovery Owners Meeting that's been covered. And I also met with Jamie, Kathy, and Becky on a number of issues with public health. Again, just to note with public health, I know it was mentioned before, we have two vaccine clinics today, noon to 6:00, and Thursday, noon to 6:00. I would note that the reservations are required. And as they've mentioned, the Moderna, the Moderna shot is the one that was most widely given here. And so if you're wanting to get that first, second, or booster, it's going to be important that you get online to look because my understanding is a number of the reservations have already been filled. Again, yes, tomorrow, we'll participate with Commissioner Mojo, Commissioner Gross, and Mr. Melton at the Wild Rice Watershed redistribution public hearing. That is tomorrow in Ada at the watershed at 2:00 PM. Reminder that we have our district meeting Friday at 8:00. If anybody wants to ride along with me, they're certainly welcome. And for our county employees, open enrollment ends this Friday. As of yesterday at 4:00, we still had 310 outstanding forms. And so be nice to Anna and start getting that information and not wait till Friday. And with that, I would, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. So at this point in time, the remaining item on our agenda is a closed session. I guess I would like to have a motion to go into closed session. Then after, once we do that, we'll take a short break before we do commence with the, with the...
I'll move.
All right, we have a motion to close by Commissioner Gross.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Back from closed session regarding labor negotiation discussions, we have no further action from the board today, so we are adjourned.